I requested one, so why pick one out?
Can we just slide a chair down?
Yeah.
Slide the physical chairs.
Um, airbrush chairs?
No, we're shifting them.
I scheduled one shift.
Four thirty-two. The four nine twenty breath.
I didn't think it would be right.
That's a perfect one. Which probably shows up the ones that are first of all.
He doesn't sure like we'd like to study some laws and things like that.
Because I saw the issue you saw on somebody posted like something. How much they're at whose ours is something. Three hundred like two thirty-two.
It's bad.
No.
Twenty-five and forty-four. I can make like twelve, right? Ten, I guess, too.
Yeah, it's bad.
Is it gonna be like two weeks?
It is. It's the whole thing. This is something. You're at the fourth batch. The numbers, I think, should be similar. A little bit rather than one.
They just beat her in flyers, these are homeless.
Yeah.
Let me give out sorts of.
No, we prefer.
Oh, Scott, go back. Shoot me email where you did that. My from my care thing changed to. I don't see if I can get a change.
I'm just gonna do firearms.
I've heard. This was several weapons we could have detected.
Any, I don't care what. Something simple like that.
I'm gonna call down. Questioning your order at six thirty-one. There's no flat question names for.
I'm ready.
All right, wrote from Mr. Joy. Mr. Gallow, Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Pittler.
Here.
All right, we'll jump to the police, so chief, all right, go ahead, page eight.
Thank you, board. So, I'm looking at these numbers, they're a little bit different from the ones that I would actually do now as well. They're not the ones that I sent to Harold or the notes as well. So I'm not, I'm not sure how you would like me to proceed.
What, page eight? Harold, another copy for Scott? Oh. Yeah.
I mean, you can go through what I have, but I don't know why. A lot of this two thousand twenty-three.
I think it's hard to sign with the way you can.
Uh, we can, I guess we'll skip that page to ask.
Yeah, well, tough question. Why don't you send it to all of us, so that we actually know what it was?
Well, most of this is contractual, so.
Well, some of this, but we also don't know what the changes were, so would it be helpful to?
Well, what number are you talking to get a line item?
I mean, I just started from the top. So, the last one for the chief salary, um, I did it the way it's been historically done here, I just added it. Add one thirty-four, five fifty, and this is one thirty. That would, I'll come with you after you guys.
Now, it's sergeant's.
Is that the only one that's different? No, no, there's three, there's another one from the one that I had here that emailed me, like patrol officers, was six hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty-six. This one is four twenty-eight, four hundred. The one I had was four nineteen, nine forty-eight.
That's why I said it would be just easier if he sent us a copy.
You guys just want me to go through about what yours looks like?
I know.
Do you have what, what you don't kind of hear?
This one or this one? This is the one that you emailed me, but this one's definitely this one.
Right.
So it's this one.
This one.
All right, let's go, go each one then, that's fine.
Okay. Chief salary, um, hundred thirty thousand. Sergeant's salary is one oh nine, four sixty-two. I calculated that, one ten, two eighty-eight. Patrolman's salary is four twenty-eight, four hundred. I calculated that at four nineteen. I can say with the sergeant's salary, that if we would do some sort of promotion, that it would be, the combined sergeant's salary would be two hundred twenty thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and two cents. The only cost difference between a promotion from a corporal to a sergeant would be two thousand four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Next, the admin.
Well, before we go, are you guys looking to add a second sergeant, or? Well, could we really have to add it if that's what your pleasure is?
Well, I think our biggest problem is, any of the police officers that we're trying to get have already been sucked off, or has hired one that we were looking at? So, like, we just keep getting screwed. So talking about overtime, I don't want your overtime. It's not anybody's fault but ours for not moving quicker on this and giving people.
Do you feel you're looking at a second sergeant?
Well, that was a question.
So, uh, so here's my thing is, um, promotions can come and go whatever they want. I can tell you that there is several officers who take a lot of initiative in here, whether it's to be a corporal or to be a sergeant, um, it's something that they're interested in, they're requesting schooling, they're requesting more, um, things to do around here, they're doing things that I don't even have to ask them to do. I just thought that for two thousand four hundred and seven dollars, if we put it in the budget, if we would promote somebody, it's there. If we don't, then we don't promote them. It's just something that I was thinking about. I can tell you Corporal Cooper has stepped up since Chief Castle left, and he, I have shown him how to do every single thing as a chief, and he's only a corporal. But again, it would ultimately be your decision, I just thought it would be something to put it in there in case we wouldn't want to use it.
What was the difference you said?
Two thousand four hundred.
Seven?
And seven dollars and sixty-five cents. What, what are we looking at that's different? What numbers are we looking at?
Oh, well, we're looking at, um.
No, 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 I mean, that's different from this budget.
Well, what you're look, what he's looking at is, we have sergeant's salary, right?
Uh-huh.
So he wants to make two sergeant salaries in the budget.
No, no, I get that.
Okay. So, probably, money wise?
He's talking about his line item, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about his line item. Where's the difference, like? You said it's different than what's on here, where's that number?
Oh, that was the one that said to you yesterday.
I haven't.
We realized numbers throughout the day, throughout last night.
Okay, we or you?
Okay, okay, so it's in the, all right.
It's in the original.
Yeah. But this isn't for another one, this isn't the budget you gave.
Last night, no.
No, 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 I'm not talking about you, I'm talking to Jason. Is that isn't, this is not the budget that you gave, Mr. Steve.
No.
Thank you, that's why I was asking.
The next one for four ten, one oh six, for the part-time patrolman's salary, um, it is forty-five on here. On mine, I've wanted to change it to detective only, and give Detective Goschall a raise. Detective Goschall is very, 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 very valuable to our, um, police department. I think he does a lot of things that most people don't know about, including he purchased all the computers and hardware and everything for himself here. Besides that, he is a wealth of knowledge for all the officers that we have. He has taught not only myself some things, but all of them as well, with detective work and everything like that. So, my original, um, budget, I was gonna see if we can move him up to fifty-seven, which would be thirty-eight dollars an hour. I can also tell you that several departments tried acquiring to poach him from us.
Oh, absolutely.
And they're still currently trying to poach him from us.
And he seems perfectly happy here.
I had the number changed.
Yeah, he seems perfectly happy.
Fifty-seven?
You're saying that, so, so the four ten, one oh six would all be the patrolman's salary, you said you wanted to be detective's salary?
I just changed it to detective, and my thought process behind that is if you guys would ever want to hire part-time, you can set the rate at a different rate compared to the detective rate.
In the notes, or we do have part-time detective?
Yeah, and in the, in the notes here, it does say it part-time, but. Where did we deviate from what you submitted to what we see today? Like, you said there was changes, where how, where did that come from, who was involved, like, where did that piece? How did we get here to these numbers? From last night?
You asked me?
I guess, I.
Uh, so, we went through, we did all the numbers throughout the day, and there are percentages that we were what people currently getting paid, we added the five percent. We went with historical data versus, uh, so, so this number here with the part-time detective is, is a number that he didn't share, that he was looking to give this guy a pay raise.
So, last year detectives got the same pay raises as the officers did, so they got, he got five and a half percent. The value that he brings here, I reevaluated it, he came to me and asked me, and he told me about different departments trying to have higher hand to bring there. He came up with a number, personally, I thought it was a little bit higher, high. I asked him, what about this number, I brought it down significantly, and he was okay with it. Very. Yeah, I'm not sticking just on him, like, you know, like example, you know, four ten, one hundred. We used projected one thirty-four, five fifty, but we have a hundred and thirty thousand flat. I asked my question, where did we lose the four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, like, what played into that, or?
Uh, we have, you're going to part show me that, I mean, you made the one fifty.
No, no, I'm saying, Jason proposed last night, one thirty-four, five fifty on his, and today we're at one thirty, a hundred and thirty thousand flat. Where did the four thousand five hundred and fifty disappear from, what, like, what, what played into his numbers coming to these numbers? I, I know you said there was research or?
Well, yeah, I mean, we had no historical data, because we hadn't had one for two years. Or for two cycles. But, you know, we can make that number whenever you want.
I'm just answering. Um, the next one for the admin here has sixty-five, five twenty. For her salary, I don't know what you guys are negotiating, so I just did the six percent on her salary, which would be sixty-six, one forty-four, which would come to thirty-one dollars and eighty cents an hour, that's forty weeks. Or forty hours a week, fifty-two weeks. That's what I had it submitted it as. But again, that's just me going off whatever the department is getting for her wages. Overtime, I see it has eighty here. On mine, I kept it at forty. Obviously, we're over overtime this year, I know that. I know some of the most, well, I won't say most of it. A good portion of the overtime was never logged correctly, so it's not logged under holidays. Cause under holidays, we had last year, I believe it was forty thousand in overtime budgeted. This year, I think we're up to probably around, what, eighty?
Eighty-one, eight hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-five cents.
So, I would say probably, how many holidays have we had, a good portion of that can probably be taken off the overtime. But if you guys want to leave it at eighty thousand.
Well, our, our projection is with the first year, a hundred eighty. So, uh, you know, the twenty-four was fifty-three, I, we can make that number whatever you guys think is a good number.
Yeah. If you want to keep the eighty, that's fine, I don't. I can tell you for the holidays, I budgeted fifty thousand, but the holidays actually come out to sixty-four thousand. I'm taking for granted, not everybody has their comp bank full, so I'm taking for granted that a lot of guys are gonna put comp time in these comp time, that we won't have to pay out every single holiday in overtime. That's why I budgeted that. Historically, that has been a pretty decent number. Yeah, and I believe Castle was kept at around forty thousand.
He is correct, where the holidays have not been tracked, uh, correctly. And we have to go back to get that data.
Isn't that our payroll department is screwing up?
I think it was prior.
That, that, cashing against versions?
What?
He's not blaming other people.
Here, we said charity.
FICA, I'm not sure how you got that number. I didn't get that number.
It's a formula based on, uh, benefits and, uh, your salary. Take those two items together and seven point six five.
For holidays here, there's zero, I guess on yours. Mine, I budgeted fifty. Historically, we did forty, I did fifty, because I know the chance is at the one and four comp time. So, that is holiday data.
Is it food? Is health insurance the same?
Four ten, one forty-eight, four one two next. So, uh, we have one guy about in the healthcare clinic, so. And with pending hiring, we figured on two for the next year's budget. So that's where that number comes from. And the same two would carry through for, uh, all this stuff, except for the life and disability, we, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the sick buyback. Once again, you, you have, don't want to hear what people are going to fashion of what they're not.
Yeah, so the way it stands now, if we don't take any sick days, you, they're gonna, you're gonna have to pay out sixteen thousand, fifty-one dollars.
That's different from what's here.
Um, vacation buyback, I only did, um, one officer for forty hours. The only reason I budgeted that was because a lot of guys here were low on our vacation pool, so. We don't get a lot of cases, so I expect them to use it, it's not like when Elliot and Des were here, when they had five weeks vacation, and they sold some back, that's why I did forty hours.
So what was your amount you had?
Two thousand. Um, for comp time buyback, I believe we're a little over from what we were last year. Now, I have some of that as well. I believe Corporal Cooper cashed in some of his. So, last year I budgeted for a full-time officer salary for four hundred and eighty hours, and that's exactly what I did this year, which would be twenty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars. Comp time buyback here is twenty-five thousand.
Uh, our thirty-one thousand dollar number's in the book, because shot one was in the day, looking for a stop type.
Well, now, with this page though, I mean, are we gonna change any numbers?
I wanna think about it, because I'd actually like to see what, I'd like to sit there and compare to what Jason had versus sitting in the way he has been. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Got a spreadsheet, but it gets changed. And you didn't even know it was changed, till I got the other one. Doesn't work that way. Supposed to be working together.
All right, page nine.
Um, operational supplies, workman's insurance, I believe Harold came up with that number.
That's worth.
Forty-five thousand, three hundred and two. The next one is operational supplies, thousand, flares, thousand, printing, four hundred. Police education materials, twelve hundred, I believe I had fifteen hundred.
We can pull that.
For.
Do you have any plans on what's coming up with, you know, education materials and stuff?
Yeah, so, normally, we have enough to get us through this year. Normally, next year is when everything starts again, and that's when we'll purchase everything we need for, um, any events at the schools, or the sort of association, or anywhere that somebody would like us to, we try to put a little bit out each time.
You said you just narrowed it to fifteen.
Yeah, and that's only because last year we budgeted twelve, and I think we had like fourteen. I think we went over a hundred or two hundred bucks. Everything's just getting a little bit more expensive.
You're, you're a little over this, right?
Everything's just getting a little bit more expensive. Postage I put up a little bit, because we have sent, been sending a lot more certified mail. Office supplies, thousand.
Now, that, you can add a detail of what's managed, you know, how it's gonna be less.
Sorry. Office supplies, will probably be over a little bit. We went over a little bit this year, but we had to buy, um, extra stuff, and that's something like that, we had to buy a, uh, new shredder, the shredder stopped working for. I think that's fine.
Cause it's a full.
Open down to four ten, three twenty-three, rifle repair. I would like to change the name of that, just the firearms or weapons repair, just because rifle repair, I don't know why I was having that, but.
What's rifle?
Yeah. It was okay with that. Ammunition's the same, duty equipment's good, radio repair.
The, the ammo. Uh, we only spent three hundred bucks here, so, are you gonna need some extra stuff next to go around?
No, we, we purchased it, we just prob, no, I don't know if the lawyer's got to invoice it, but it's coming. If she didn't get it yet. Um, the medical premium opt-out here is twenty-four, four. I had twenty-nine, five, and that was based off five officers, and I added the administrative assistants, I believe per her team search contract, she gets reimbursement, which is valid on the insurance. So I just added that here.
I think she's included in the admin portion, uh, with, with her money.
County dispatch, it all goes off CPI, estimating it around sixty, you say sixty-four roughly. Cell phones, fifty-five hundred. I add, I, mine was forty-seven, and that was with an additional phone, if we need it for the next hire. NCTs, uh, air cards and everything, seven thousand seven hundred seventy-eight. Auto wash in this, fourteen fifty. I guess one of the next biggest things, uh, to talk about, since we're getting in the vehicle maintenance. So I have a budget to keep with the Durango and the Ford F-150. After speaking with Harold a little bit, it might not be a bad idea for us to unload the Ford F-150 while we can still get a decent amount for it, and unload the Dodge Durango before they start costing us the door money. I can tell you that we did, I did reach out, a new truck, it's forty-eight thousand. The outfit is just shy of twenty-five thousand.
The combination of that package is four ten, eight hundred. And, uh, we did, I didn't note that we're gonna get rid of the Durango in the truck, we also gotta apply for a grant.
If we can, yeah, so the next grant's coming up, it's due by November thirtieth. We're gonna try and go ahead and put that vehicle in for that grant, what'd you say, seventy-two thousand?
Seventy-two, four thirty-five?
Yes. Publications, fifty-five hundred. Push train, twelve thousand. Travel, uh, here on yours is, I'll say, three thousand miles, fifteen hundred. B-spec certification, seven oh five, that was changed last year to speed timing. Same way with N-RAT, four ten, seven oh seven should be removed, and four ten, seven oh four should be removed. And that total is thirty-seven hundred, and that's for the B-spec, the TVX stopwatch, all the on-site fees, the speedometers for five vehicles, and, uh, one additional. We see on the capital purchases, Harold moved that up for the new vehicle, if people get the grant for the vehicle, and you guys have decided to purchase it, seventy-two thousand. Capital purchase, minor, is three thousand, I believe I had that at five thousand. We will have to purchase three ballistic vests, um, just coming here.
Two or two.
Yeah, about a thousand apiece, um. Hopefully, we'll be able to get the grant, I've never seen grants done, so hopefully, it's still there, getting quite a little grant.
Gonna have a little diner in case they go up and we don't get the grant, so the five thousand makes sense.
New software. Twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five, that's for everything. I can tell you that plate logic, which is on LPR, jumped up to three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars this year. In two thousand twenty-seven, it's gonna jump up to a little over six thousand dollars as well. And we budgeted five hundred dollars for five more cameras.
Batteries.
Batteries, yeah. I had mine at three hundred, but this is five hundred. Computer hardware, we have fifteen hundred budgeted.
We need to, won't that include that Cody thing?
We can, but that's what we're looking for. I didn't know, I can open it to see what the exact number was.
He committed twelve, twelve thirty-two.
Twelve thirty-two.
And another three hundred, so it's fifteen thirty-two fifty.
Yeah, so we're gonna be moving to cat fire here shortly. We can move to it anytime, they're still getting some of the bugs out of it, so I've been waiting a little bit, but once that moves, that's another part of it that we'll have to purchase to move forward with it.
So, move it to three thousand?
Was that a four ten, eight, or four eight, or something?
Yes.
And I know, I spoke to Harold, so under the software, I moved pace budget totally into ours, I don't know if you were planning on continuing to use it for the admin side. I know he mentioned something about not using it, um, so I moved that entire budget to ours. I just don't want to see anybody double budget. And if the board will be okay with it, can we remove lines four ten, three eight four, four ten, three eighty-eight, four ten, three eighty-nine? It's all the old vehicles that we're normally even having, uh, just maybe clean it up, make it a little, little bit nicer. Yeah, if you want, last page.
Say those numbers again?
It's gonna be four ten, three eighty-four, three eighty-eight, three eighty-nine, three ninety, and three ninety-one.
Think they are missing off.
They're going on five.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Where's that? Perfect. As for the fuel line, that's four ten, two twenty-one, um, I reached out to the fuel line, because everything is under one, I guess, account, to see what we've actually spent for the PD itself, he has not given me that information back, but once I did, I'll make sure you have it.
So, that, not, all, all the fuel, I can move to a different line item, uh, un, under, uh, the township. So as the road crew does use all that, going forward, we'll be using the wet part, so it separates out more of who uses what. So you don't have to sit here and try and get eight thousand gallons in for that who uses it.
I also had ARL in there for the dogs, budgeted at three thousand. I believe it was moved to four nineteen, one hundred.
Yeah, I don't control. And that's a thousand now.
You know, we've spent six hundred so far this year. I think, I put whatever number I need, you probably, you pick as well.
We're going back to three thousand? My question?
Oh, if actually you had more, I'll put whatever you want in there.
Well, five hundred is, you have more than you need, just one thing. Most of our dogs go back fairly quick, we're gonna have a few here and there, but community's pretty good about working together to get the dogs back to ground.
So what's three thousand, we're saying one thousand, but we spent six hundred so far this year?
I think we spent more than six.
That's, we spent a lot than.
Two, I was gonna say two?
No, I think we spent a thousand so far.
So, two?
All right.
Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
This is Joy.
Present.
Here.
He's for the people. Where's number four?
Ryan, you're just like, Ryan. It's your whole Tuesday.
Yeah. Where's number four? I don't know, 'cause what hurts?
By the way, honey, you can cook for me anytime.
Yeah, it's good.
It was so good.
Good.
It was so good. He really just ordered it.
Cornbread, man, I slayed through this all in front of him.
I don't understand why you guys spend so much time on a blip.
This morning. This morning, no good.
We could just go get steroids and it would be a lot cheaper than you going to buy the stuff, but I keep going and buying, so why don't you go get steroids?
I, I understand, I know it. You, you can tell Doc.
Don't be doing a call on the tone.
You have to call and tell them, cause they're gonna wanna do a FaceTime video with you to diagnose.
Why can't I do that with my eyes, when I, when I did my display?
Well, he's on the tour, he took pictures of his.
They'll never happen.
His eyes are probably dry from staring in all the. I'm gonna say that shouldn't be.
For you.
The rest of this conversation will be held up here when they choose to return. What we have for YouTube and people here is we have a, we have a labor attorney downstairs that was brought in unbeknownst to anyone at this table, but two people, they had a closed-door meeting, two, three days ago, unbeknownst to all the two people at this table. And they're trying to have a discussion about it downstairs, not in the public side. Per our solicitor, who will repeat what he told me, this could all be talked about upstairs. So I am done, I am not having this conversation without the public involved, whose taxpayer dollars are being engaged by a board member in our, in our menu. Without board approval. And when they come back, we'll tell everybody the rest of this.
Where am I? Over the line, you show. Oh? No.
Where are you? Have it on there, look in the red.
Oh, you do, outdoor, right there.
If he squints any harder, his eyes will close.
Three forty-six. Yeah, I see, yes. Do you think that would come down, if we bade it out? I, I, I kind of, so, this was our estimate, I mean, if you go. I was kind of working through numbers since we talked, so I got some more assessments on both. If you go to the last page, I kind of heard that. If we do next year at this year's prices, um we get that plus the other end, you know what I mean? So I just, I took these numbers and put them in. Which I anticipate. Apparently they don't wanna come up and finish the discussion up here, well. Mr. Bentley and Mr. Inner Magic Steve wanted to continue the conversation downstairs.
They're used to closed-door stuff, like today.
Maybe you should go first one.
Oh, I was listening. Actually, I'm here.
Yeah.
I just heard me.
Oh, your brother's kicking in.
Come on, wine and cheezers. We're waiting for the wine and cheezers to come on.
Conversation for our solicitor can be held upstairs, that's where it should be happening.
Oh, yeah, but he doesn't want to.
Well, we're gonna, we'll do it there, we'll do it here.
I have a suggestion to our labor guy to leave, because to pull him into something, I wouldn't wanna do that.
Yeah, I feel bad for him.
Wait a minute, I have no issue with that.
Oh, no.
But the other ones are downstairs having his eat it, how's your joke?
Never.
I know, we all know who's having his eat it. I know, he'll, I'll, he has come talking, the walking.
Brian, I gotta make a fun in that Christmas trees for.
Barry knows his business venture.
We're gonna buy one, nail it, so it stands up there.
He'd be all about that. I, however, remember, guess who set up the stand this morning? Me, and I almost broke my neck and my ankle multiple times.
We don't need you to do that now.
You probably, you probably gonna be the number camera, would have been a good time.
We'll watch it tomorrow, so we need to go laugh.
Probably missing it. You probably were laughing, I can see it now.
Okay, we'll buy, we'll put a bowl, a bowl on it.
Rod's still waiting for his pumpkin to show up by his mailbox.
Yeah.
Don't worry, Christian's on the pocket, it's gonna happen. All you gotta do is buy it at the top of the hill and just go.
Those are really nice.
Those two mind guns, huge.
Oh, they, I just love them, they look so nice.
There you go.
And they smell so bad. I don't think I've ever. So, Connor's dealer is.
So, but Ron know what you want, one day at a time though, because he'll forget everything that you just told him.
I'll forget too.
But the monks are too.
No, Ron writes it down. Do you wanna do a caller?
Are you doing an hour and a half list?
Or just a first? It's like he was never there before.
There's a lot more than you know.
Usually goes pretty quick, cause usually they don't wanna bring him, they send it to Tuesday. Tuesday's usually the longer one.
Joy will, Joy will light it up, don't worry. Robinson doesn't need a cane.
Yeah, I don't really say.
Should we send that kind of stuff around here? Get six a hour.
We don't need to repeat a last time.
We're not gonna get a humidity check, really. It's very humid, who is that?
Which guy was that?
Ron, you're, I'm just having a test. When they did, put the little cords all over their yard, and then the little guy can come over to run around and chew the kettle. I don't know, she doesn't have one on Friday.
Scott, do we need to retrieve the children?
Oh, I thought she was going to have that. I'm not their parent.
I don't, I don't know. I feel like mommy and daddy at this point.
Yeah, no. Did Chuck call you? Went there Thursday, wants to go back. Yeah. Don't quote me on Mondays.
Quote it.
He didn't know if you were in or not, Joe.
It's probably Monday and Tuesday.
Alright, next week. No. Uh huh. Or up behind Maple Grove.
Okay. This place is. We used to go there. At the time, we could drive all the way over and maybe close it a little bit left in a side road because something broke down. And then we stopped home there, we started going to New Edinburgh. South Reading was nice because it's easy to get in there, you know, it's a nicer note. There's a plank that's good. I shall take silver notes closer. Yeah. But it's reliable price. Except if your new address would be, go to get seventy tons. For like twenty trucks. You're like, hey. Big guy getting an hour and a half.
I'm gonna make this steak once. They have no guts. None. It's called wusses. They're down there whining.
Because this is improper, right here.
Have any more discussions about the rest of the?
Oh, they can, they can have discussions and violate sunshine acts.
So I already kind of explained what's going on. Basically, the other people at the table at this point want to continue to chat downstairs. And not up here in the public's eyes where our solicitor said.
I asked him to bring Dylan down there and tell me.
I will go here. Sure, you can go here. Public media.
What are we talking about? The crowd loved it.
The issues regarding potential contract negotiations.
That's not all. No, that's not all, Christopher.
Alright, then I'll, I'll.
I was gonna say, I think Scott needs to explain.
So we, we saw the gentleman here, John Rowland from Coswell Stout, or from our solicitor's office that was invited to this meeting. Um, under executive session number two that I don't believe, I know I wasn't aware of, you weren't aware of, I'm not sure who else was or wasn't. Uh, we went down and, um, Mr. Steve, uh, brought up that, uh, obviously myself and Mr. Bittler are on the negotiating committee with, uh, for the Teamsters to contract for the road crew. Um, there's more prior to this, but we'll keep it today. Um, I was just, uh, accused of, um, colluding, negotiating outside of the contract.
Is this stuff that should be made public?
Oh, yeah.
Anything revolving around labor negotiations, which this disagreement over what happened does, should remain private because anything disclosed could potentially compromise our position. So I would respectfully ask that you keep it private.
Just let it remain as it is? Yeah, so, so alright, I'll keep that, I'll keep what we just talked about downstairs private. I'll leave it at, I was accused. Let me finish. I was accused of some things downstairs. A labor attorney from our solicitor's office was called into this meeting that I was not aware of.
I was not aware of?
Yeah.
I was not aware of.
Chris, were you aware of it? Okay, so two of the five were aware. I don't know who authorized him to be here. Um, however, accusations were made, which is why I left the room. Um, accusations against myself, a road crew member, and a Teamsters, I don't wanna short your title.
Representative.
Representative. So, um, I'm more questioning how all this started and why Tuesday, October seventh at two P M, there was a closed door meeting with our interim manager Steve and Mr. Bittler with that attorney. And were you aware of that meeting? So, so there was a closed door meeting with a labor attorney that four of the five board members did not know was that.
Okay, so, so, so two points. A, Mr. Rowland is part of our firm, you, the board has hired our firm to.
I'm not, I'm not listening. I'm not going to use Mr. Rowland or your firm.
And, and, and B, you know, he is a, a labor attorney that executive session concerned labor negotiations and was a proper executive session under the sunshine act.
Right.
Correct. We're questioning how Mr. Rowland got engaged to have a two o'clock meeting on October seventh with only one member of the board and why he was here tonight.
And it wasn't Mr. Rowland's fault.
No, no, not at all. No fault to Mr. Rowland or your office.
It was because the information given by our manager.
Again, again, I, I would, I would respectfully ask that, that any allegations of what may or may not have been remain confidential.
Before engaging a solicitor using taxpayer dollars, I don't think that's an executive session item, right?
What's that?
If we are engaging our legal firm to potentially or spend taxpayer dollars, is that an executive item?
You've already, you've already engaged us.
Who, who engage?
Where does already engage Coswell Stout?
The board engaged Coswell Stout, but we in fact did not engage.
A separate attorney to.
We weren't aware of it, okay, but the board needs to make that decision. Any disrespect to Mr. Rowland is not.
Not at all.
Not at all. None. No, nothing against Coswell Stout, nothing against Mr. Rowland. But the reason Mr. Rowland got pulled into this was because of phone call that was made that does not match the other story. Fair statement without saying.
Uh huh, I, I don't know if, if that's a fair statement or not. Alright, well then we'll close citizens' concerns.
Rob Van Loon, uh, one thirty Moyer Road. I don't have a concern. I have just a comment. I wanted to thank the road crew and Alan Myers for the paving work done on Moyer Road. Wider Drive, Albret Court and France Court. I think everybody did an excellent job. Uh, I sent a letter, uh, just mailed it yesterday to the township stating the same thing. So I just wanted to come here and recognize the group for what they did.
Thank you. Harold, was that a letter in our packet?
Oh, I didn't receive. I just mailed it yesterday.
Oh, you mailed it, yeah.
So it'll probably show up in a week.
So we'll see. Well, it has to go to Harrisburg before it comes back here. Well, thank you very much, the road crews here. Alright, another citizen's concern. Harold, we have correspondence.
Correspondence. In your packet, there is a letter from the First County Associate Detective Officials. And they are having a, uh, township officials annual county convention on October sixteenth from five P M to nine P M. If you only fear sorry. And I believe there's cocktail, or no, I shouldn't say cocktail, for refreshments and, uh, dinner.
Thank you, board. First thing I want to have on the agenda is the two officer applications. So we currently have five applications. We have two other applications where the people did not go through the academy yet. They're willing to apply. The deadline is tomorrow. I have not looked or reviewed at the application, but I guess we'll give it to the board. Do you want to move forward trying to hire? Do you want to extend the application period? Do you want to offer something to encourage people to come here and apply?
One of the things we had talked about was possible, like tuition reimbursement. I don't know if we're in a position we can afford to pay somebody salary and let her go through the academy. But if they get through it, we can certainly offer them, uh, tuition reimbursement for a commitment to staying for a certain period of time. Uh, cost of tuition, we, we figured about ten thousand dollars.
Probably.
Now, when, when are they finished?
So the academy stops, graduates at the end of November, beginning of December, and starts again in January. So if we would go to say, we send Officer Kettering to recruit at the Redding Police Academy, and if we could get somebody to recruit there and let them apply, even though they're not technically, they don't have their Act one twenty yet. Uh, but they do graduate the academy, we allow them to apply. Say we would hire them, then we would just owe them the reimbursement for their uniforms and their tuition.
So there, there's no good resumes? You said, or you said you haven't reviewed them?
I haven't reviewed them. I don't know. I know there's five. I believe one of those five is currently being hired as we speak, so there's technical.
I don't think the community can benefit by us being down two officers. Okay, the overtime will get cut when we actually employ enough officers. You've been down officers now. We've already had one leave, and the gentleman left. Whether anybody likes what I'm saying or not, I can't help it. He left because of the chaos at the administrative office. Okay? For somebody who's been here for years to leave because of that, to me tells us, we've got problems. Because it's only gotten worse. When we lost our last manager, oh, this was gonna fix it. They, this gentleman actually looked to go out because of what we put in, and it's getting worse. So I think you need to assess what we have, and maybe if you can find one of them that you think's good, and look at the academy. Do you know what I mean?
Well, so, and the thing is, our next meeting is, is actually not next week.
No, it's week out.
Yes, the following.
So would you like to extend the application period a little bit until we do this, or do you wanna close it now?
Close it now because you saw what just happened. I know that person's getting hired in a, in a district right alongside of us. Okay? I know who the chief is, and I know it's gonna continue. So if we don't fill your positions, you're gonna be having more overtime. It's just gonna create more of a cost for the community. And less people being able, you know, you're the one who's gonna live here. You and Jeb live here. Okay, it's just not right. We need to fill the positions. If you don't find someone who you think is acceptable, you can always reopen it.
So, so the question is, do we wanna offer some package to offer these guys as an incentive to come here?
Harold, let's look at what we have. Okay?
That's my thought.
You know, we ended up, we ended up then saying, we're done, we're not gonna extend it to November first, or just go with the four that he has left?
Haven't reviewed the four that.
Well, there's no harm in extending a challenge.
You know what? You wanna extend everything.
I'd say, I'd say extend it to November first. You get, then you check it, and then by the time next meeting, you look at those four, four things. You can always email us and say, hey, whatever.
Chris, these people, these people are not waiting.
Yeah, but the thing is, but the thing is, he hasn't looked at them yet.
But we've got a week and a half. We don't meet till it's next, not next Tuesday, the following Tuesday.
And we could review it in a week and a half.
Yeah, give him the time to review what's out there.
All I'm saying is, you review it, we extend it to November first if anybody else applies. He's still reviewing those four.
That's, that's what I'm in favor of.
I'm telling you, you have to look at them, find them, and if he says one's good at the next meeting, you need to hire it.
Oh, yeah, of course, that's what's gonna happen. But why can't you still extend it? Today we're done, you can't get any more applications. Maybe one, maybe tomorrow, the best candidate might slip up there.
We already lost one of the best candidates.
I'm just saying, we don't do that.
Yeah, he's seen it, and I've talked to like four other police departments around us. They're all having a hard time getting qualified applicants, and the longer you guys wait.
We're not, Walter's saying he's extended, he left before, next, the next meeting, you can hire someone.
Yeah, I guess, and we're gonna wanna extend the manager too.
Start the process with the background checks and then if somebody were to say happened to apply from now till November first, we would be willing to accept their application?
Yes.
How's that sound?
The whole process, the whole process.
Yeah.
Start the whole process.
We need, we need to.
Hopefully, it's done by the next meeting, and if somebody else pops in by November first.
This drag out stuff.
And that's not gonna happen. We still, we still want that in motion. Alright, I'll make a motion that Chief Brinbury starts the process with the four, background checks, everything else. Uh, we extend the deadline for any other applications to November first. It's one motion.
I'll second that.
I'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, board. The second thing I have on my agenda is grant applications. Um, we successfully, uh, completed two grant applications, including securing two letters of support. Two letters of support from Mark Gillan. We would not have had made it possible without the exceptional support and motivation skills of my administrative assistant. Her attention to detail and coordination, we had the difference again in applications at all times. I would just have to thank her for that.
What are we, what are we gonna, what are we gonna know when?
I don't know the date yet. But it was a little bit of a lengthy process. Um, it was a little bit of a process also to get the two letters of support from, uh, Mr. Gillan. She stayed on top of it, she got all of it and submitted it, so very proud. And the only other thing I have is I will need, I have an employee matter that will need an executive session at some point if you wanna do it after everything's done.
Oh, I do have one question, though. E A C last week was wondering, they think some of the plants were stolen out here. And ripped out. I don't know if the camera sees that far.
That does not.
Alright, 'cause two of the, the asters that were on the seven twenty-four side are.
They're gone.
And it's not somebody coming back or something.
Then Dr. Rabbit and deer.
Yeah, they're gone.
Maybe they're gonna re-grow on for you for next year.
Are they, are they right at?
Thanks.
Well, they, they, there was the four, there was aster, 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 but they, they matched each other. There was two, the two, the two that are on this side facing the building, they were also two you know, similar on seven, along seven twenty-four, so two along seven twenty-four are gone. So somebody potentially stole those.
Well, we stay and steal over the house, bring garden, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they just wanted to bring that up because.
Okay. I will have somebody here review the cameras, see if we're able to go up and see that number, but I don't believe we can.
That's all. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Alright, Harold.
Okay, uh, first thing is, uh, we have to ratify the pension M M O. Uh, for the police this year, it will be one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And for the non-union forum, it will be fifty-three, two oh four. For the fine, type of reason. An unneeded motion for that.
And that's all the normal stuff. What number would that be?
It would be twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-one.
Those calculations you found in the order bracket?
Yes, the actuary, uh, ready number.
Obligation this board has, does it not?
What's that?
It's an obligation this board has, doesn't it?
It, it is.
So I'll make a motion to adopt this case twenty-five, twenty-one. Um, may I find adoption to two thousand twenty-five minimum municipal obligation?
I'll second that, Chairman Smoot.
Alright, I'll call Mr. Joy.
No.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
What? I said, no, my stupidity, yes. I was reading something else and I'm like, oh, yeah.
Alright, now we have a resolution, which is twenty-five, twenty-two, to appoint Nelson Otte as the joint person from Robinson and from Union Township.
I have a problem with that because Peg McLean is on till twenty-twenty-six. And you're trying to manipulate it, and no, Peg is on till twenty-twenty-six. I found the documentation and I spoke to Union Township. So your information is not accurate according to that, and you don't wanna get into any more information about Daja that I'm aware of, because it will blow up and not be pretty. So my suggestion would be. So, my suggestion would be, we're on that one.
Well, you seem to wanna talk a lot tonight. Why don't you blow up and go on and on about Gaja?
Well, now, I guess the thing I would say about this resolution would be is.
Peg McLean had originally filled this seat. That seat is good till twenty-twenty-six. Peg McLean took over the seat that I vacated, which expired in twenty-twenty-five.
Well, I'm telling you, with the people now.
So, we need a motion, Mr. Steve, to appoint Nelson Otte.
That's right.
I'll make that motion.
Not good because according to Union, that's not correct.
Dash twenty-one, is it? Or twenty-two?
Twenty-two, but now, where do you, I mean, I, I mean, if there's, if there's a discrepancy, it pays.
There is a discrepancy according to Union Township who I spoke to, and they insisted her turn, the term would go through twenty-twenty-six. So, I would like to just let us go until.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Well, let's get a discussion after a second if there's one.
There isn't at this point, Mr. Beller.
We're, well, personally, I wanna verify it if it's.
Exactly. That's all I'm saying.
Do we have, do we have a second? I'd like to verify if there's really a discrepancy. Mr. Beller, do you wanna revise your motion to be contingent upon, it's the proper term?
I think that's very reasonable, reasonable counsel. Thank you for that suggestion. I'll revise that motion.
So, you wanna make motion twenty-five, twenty-two for Nelson Otte?
No, contingent upon clarification of the, the terms.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
No.
Mr. Bello.
Not until I understand more. No.
Mr. Rhodes.
Contingent upon verification of.
Well, yeah, like if, like Peg is actually till twenty-six, then, then you know the.
There's a little bit more to it, I'm afraid, from what I understood. That's why I just wanna punt till we get, I get accurate information.
Your vote, Mr. Rhodes.
Well, if this isn't correct, I don't, I don't wanna vote on it.
Well, we're gonna verify, so it's the, the.
But if it's more than the dates, if there's more of that.
Well, then, the time for that was to have Ms. Bridenstine espouse her positions on this. In the meantime, we can get this guy in and get it running properly.
Gaja hasn't been run properly for a while, but we're not even going there.
How are we gonna vote now?
As you will see later on when we get into budget.
You voted no, yeah.
We, we are going to have to kick in at least twenty thousand to Gaja.
I'm not, this is something you wanna discuss, Harold. Trust me, I had a discussion with Union Township. You do not wanna have this discussion publicly. It's gonna come back to you.
All right, now, we got Gaja left. And just take a motion, Harold.
Motion, yeah.
You say motion carried?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next is a laptop for Gaja. Uh, the end one is, uh, I think running Windows seven, maybe? And, uh, we're looking to replace it. Uh, looking to split it with, uh, Union, uh, five hundred bucks apiece. We did shop for a laptop and, uh, software, and we think that the five hundred bucks, I mean, five hundred bucks each, however.
You staying with what they're using here, which are Dells?
Yeah.
Are you staying with the computers that are used here, which are Dells?
Yeah.
It's a Dell, it's a Dell computer.
That's what I asked.
Yeah. Yep.
Now, since we don't manage, was that one line I had, you using five hundred?
Would, I, I know we can't, yeah, so, yeah, good question. We'll have to find out.
So, I'll make that, I'll make that motion. There's money in the budget, I'm relatively certain.
There is, yeah.
You include dollar now in that.
Yeah, up to five hundred dollars.
Right, I'll say, and roll call, Mr. Beller, please, it's Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Bello.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beller.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
By means of leave. We split the money to check, so we'll be in the packet. Uh, one fire company gets twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents, while the other one gets twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And we alternate back and forth who gets the cent. Recycling grant, we received twenty-one fifty-nine that is continually dropping. I don't know whether we're not getting as much recycling we have in the past, or whether they've dropped the amounts that are paying.
And how many days a week do they empty that?
Twenty times a week. I, I, you know what? I don't, I don't think they're changed their schedule. I think it's like one, once or twice a week. But it doesn't seem to be like overflowing like it did years ago.
What all is in the recycling? Just because, you know, that might be part of it. I know we have problems with it before, so now is it just cardboard? Is it just?
As far as I know, it's cardboard, glass, aluminum.
Newspaper.
Pants, newspaper, uh, and certain plastics. Okay, two-five twenty-nine, we'd like to use the parking lot here at the police station as well as the restrooms from seven AM to two PM on November the second.
It's the annual.
The drive.
How are you gonna close that after that? Like last year, you have no problem with that, right?
Yeah, we just, we just think close the, 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 until after that.
I'll second that.
They providing insurance certificate? Sure.
Now, are they providing insurance?
Right.
We, we can get it, yes.
I, I would recommend that.
All right, now, we'll revise that. I will make a motion to allow them to use the parking lot, it's what it says listed, as long as, if insurance is provided.
They have, they have the township as a condition.
Sure. Prior to that day.
Motion second.
Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Bello.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beller.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, uh, I've been, I sent out two major applications today, uh, would go along with, I guess, the other three that we, you received.
These are two new ones?
There's two new ones. One earlier today, and one around noon a little past. It is.
I did. I liked that. I liked the five hundred.
Here.
I see, I mean, I just didn't have time.
The email's been very strange. Yeah. It's not Friday from last.
It says six, oh, one AM.
Yeah, that was the early one, and there was. Yeah, yeah.
Comments, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to start setting up, I'd like to start setting up management. Let's set up having interviews now. What? No, they're not.
I don't need that room.
Yeah, it's funny, it's like, no, you don't even know each other.
Yeah, I think we have five total. Uh, it's October ninth, and we need to reach out to all five, if all five are interested in scheduling.
Would it make some sense to review their qualifications first?
You have their resumes.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
What qualifications you reviewing during the resume?
I, I wasn't overly impressed with those resumes. I mean.
You're not overly impressed with anybody.
We have five. It's been how long?
Yeah, and we're not going months without a manager like you've suggested, Mr. Beller.
I never suggested that.
Yes, you did. You want me to show you?
What I said, what I said.
Uh-huh.
When you wanna, when you wanna be quiet, I'll, I'll tell you a story about managers. When you wanna be quiet.
Well, then, will anybody have a, well, Scott made a comment, all, all five of them, just be offered.
You, you have to be serious, Scott?
I am very serious.
Very serious. I, I'll be anxious to sit in on those.
Oh, no. We have you sitting on enough problems.
I'll be, I'll be anxious to sit in on those.
I've already met, I've already stated that I wanna start taking.
All right, so Scott said he wanted to set all five. I don't know.
I would like.
But then you join.
Yep, and I'd like to actually sit in there.
Let me be a motion or two something for sure.
Jeff, do you wanna, do you wanna be a fluke with me and sit in on management?
Jeff, the top three or something.
I don't, I don't think a motion is required on this matter.
Well, then, I guess Harold will reach out to all five and see who's still.
See who's interested, schedule at their convenience, and let everyone know. Let the whole board know, date times, and, uh.
I would definitely make sure I can be there.
All right, so, all five.
Mutually links and pants. So, me, mutually linked sent us our files in a format that we'll have to pay a fortune to decipher. So, Jeff did volunteer to come down and try and download the stuff out of our computer in a format that we can view. The pants letters, uh, are gonna go out with the first bill. I talked to him this afternoon. Uh, they're anticipating having them out before the end of the month. And we're planning on putting a notice on their phone system to contact them in the event that they have a problem with their sewer building. In, in the packet, you'll find a check for the release of the first escrow from the estate. Good question. Does the escrow go with the property or the person?
Uh, what, what, what's the escrow for?
It was a, uh, insurance escrow for demolition of the house.
And did that demolition occur successfully?
It did, and the property was sold.
The property was sold. So, do we know the, the location of the person who provided the escrow? It should, it should.
Insurance. Actually, you, you guys represent them.
It should be returned to the person providing it.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, my favorite, the light and Jim Raulder.
Oh, Justin, a way I for you? When I was coming this way?
Today.
Today? Okay, it was back past Crofton and Knowles. It was back up that floor.
There was an accident. There was an accident somewhere, uh, which drove all the traffic to seven twenty-four. So, I made a motion. I sent it up, sent the, the headlock time surveys out, our studies out to everyone. I made a motion to authorize me to sign that, so we can get them down here, maybe implement it by tomorrow. Uh, does everybody have a chance to read it? I mean, everybody understands it. We don't need any place. Well, maybe the general public might. So, we're extending the time when east and west, putting a delay on Gibraltar and Overver Road. And there's also a time device, or a timer that may put on a loop on either side so that they don't automatically trip. So, we'll see how that works.
The, the other thing that is worth noting and might be the bigger change is, they're adding the ten seconds to the seven twenty-four approaches. So, when they go green, they'll be green for ten seconds longer, but during the peak hours, uh, which are two to six, I think, there's actually a, a preemptive, uh, uh, loop for the eastbound approach, which registers if there's cars there. And one of the things that Pen Dot is saying is, when we start backing up, there, that loop may fall between cars or under a tractor-trailer, and it's not locked. The purpose of that is to lock that light out so that the other approaches can't short sight. It will automatically be locked out during the peak hour, so it should move more traffic. I don't think this is our silver bullet, but it's a first step.
Yeah, uh, ideally, we'd like to get a leading green light so that the eastbound lane turns green before the westbound, dump all that traffic out of there. But we gotta do it separate time. I mean, uh, took some today going to get this one done. So, if we can get a motion to make that happen?
No, I was just gonna comment, do the motion, and I'm coming.
And then we'll have to make a motion to get that implemented starting pronto.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Bello.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Beller.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I spoke to a tech from Telco on Sunday morning. Um, I know we had controller issues that replaced, replaced. He advised me that, uh, pretty much one out of every three controllers has been failing on them. They, uh, that controller manufacturer changed where they get their pieces from, and they're seeing it across the board. Everywhere Telco does work, that one in three controllers are being replaced within a month of install. They revert to factory default settings. That's what I think we experienced here, where it was good for a week, and then all of a sudden.
Went to heck in hell.
Yes, and they replaced it, and it's good for a week.
Do we know when this one went in? Uh, I would say about four weeks, four, five weeks.
They're, they're under warranty?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't pay charges on that, but yeah, that's a cool insight that this is not just Robinson. They are.
So, I will remind Telco when I get the information back from the state, to ensure that they check that out. Okay. Managership bond taken care of. We have a bond. Rock Hall Bridge.
How much do you have the bond for?
What's that?
How much do you have the bond for?
Uh, two minutes. Rock Hall Bridge, oh, all the wires are removed from the bridge, and, uh, they're scheduled to start work on Monday. They've already got their permits and everything to start working.
Okay, I have a question. Did you get the money back that, for the pole we moved for the eleven thousand and some dollars that you paid? Or is it still, we're waiting, since we shouldn't have paid it in the first place?
Well, we're, we're not waiting because we were required to pay for the pole. It was not a relocation out of the right of way. It was addition, a new additional pole that was required.
That's the utility company's position. It's not really worth fighting further or mitigating the matter, obviously.
It just seems like Ms. Bridenstine always wants to fight about something.
Well, just trying to make sure that our pole is used correctly.
We've been through all this for, for months.
Right there on Almeny Creek.
Okay, Almeny Creek, October eleventh, the route crew's supposed to go out there and do traffic for Dave Swarwolke, removes the debris out of the stream.
How long do we know how long that might take?
What's that?
To know how long it might take. Have you looked at that?
No, I would, I would take a half a day. I mean, I don't know. Can I, can I, I don't know.
Dave, I did talk to Dave. Um, he said it could be whatever part of the entire day. Um, he's thinking the traffic control might just be closer. Um, just because of where he has to set up that one piece of equipment that he has with the outbreakers, it's, you know, just wanna take the whole. Whole lane, not both lines. Problems with dry lines here, a little bit more traffic than normal, if that's.
And we'll, we'll hear about it.
Oh, absolutely.
Next thing is, who, who else is that there? Over the road meeting, we met with a representative from Pen Dot, and he's working on a plan to install some plumbing, uh, on that roadway. Uh, he actually recommended to just close the both ends and mark it to local traffic only. And, uh, we had some concerns over doing that, one of which is, there's businesses on that section of road, and they won't be very happy if their customers think that they can't get to, uh, the business they wanna visit. So, we'll, we'll try and figure that out. And the Green Hills Estates Pumper Hollow, it turned out that Robinson received sixty-seven thousand gallons from that. And, uh, uh, they did, I, I did talk to Joe, and he did say he would pay whatever it was. And, uh, when they, when we had a sewer authority meeting, uh, we'll have to establish what that, that bill's gonna look like. Uh, but he said that the guy installing the sewer plant actually terminated the pumper hollow. And, uh, so he fixed that, and the original pumper hollow is back doing what it was supposed to be doing. The only other thing is here, do we wanna continue with the, uh, line item eight? Uh, we haven't had anybody here for quite some time.
Why do you item eight, Ron?
I mean, eight, the fire companies.
You have, you have our fire companies discuss removal agenda category.
Yeah, and which is number eight.
It's not.
I, I always get the, the early edition, and it's always a little long. So, it would be the fire companies and the EMC report. Uh, but I had, I, I, in, in letter C, nobody's been here for probably two years. Uh, so, except you guys, so we're gonna continue with that.
Have we gotten an EMC report from Dave?
No.
I don't think it hurts to leave it there.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, just to keep it there, we always do what we say.
The worst, you don't get it, you just go on your way. The worst, you don't get it, you just go on your way, it's not telling anybody.
We'll just keep it there.
Okay. Minutes and reports are in your packets?
Well, now.
What happened to supervisor?
The supervisor reports is eight, so that's back on your.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I just hit that.
Anybody have any updates on that?
Zoom's a hundred fifty dollars a year.
Is that a lot of money, a hundred fifty dollars a year?
No. A hundred fifty dollars a year is all they want for it.
I have two quick things, the data center and solar power intertwined. EAC has been looking into data centers and who knows what's gonna happen with the property up here. But the energy consumption that they potentially use, solar would be putting something to help if that happens. They're also looking into, they looked at, I think it's York County has a data center ordinance that they're gonna review and see if we want to be more proactive and try to control the issues that other areas are having as they're going in, if it happens. So I just want to update you. We've also worked with Kraft on a data center ordinance in Elmo's town as well. Okay, so yeah, EAC, they looked at, I think it's like some township or some New York county and they're gonna look at something from Penn Future, which is.
Yeah, I forget if it was Lancaster or.
I think the ordinance that we produced was based upon the Penn Future template.
Well, we've also heard that there's another one trying to win on that property over Route Ten, where they were trying to put it in the warehouses.
Ain't better than houses, happy day.
Also possibly going in there.
So anyway, that's what's EAC Solar.
I mean, I can't see two of them wanting, I don't know where they'd give them power from.
That's where the solar thing can happen, but.
Well, I mean, two of them, I don't even see a solar's gonna happen.
I don't need this one. That's our company's ministry reports review.
Good evening, Board, under my agenda, the first item, M three explody will be here at your regular meeting. Monday evening, the Planning Commission did recommend several waivers for your consideration as well as a conditional final plan approval. So again, they will have their presentation for you on your next regular meeting. Twenty twenty-five street work, we did receive the payment application request from Alan Myers, we reviewed it, everything appears in order. We have several all night values, I sent everything back to them for final signatures. What we're looking at is a final payment of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. And that will reflect a payment under run or under contract of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and forty cents. So I think that they're a really nice job and it came in with a contract. I hope that they will return those signed copies and I will have them here for you at your regular meeting.
When we look through the budget and we get to the highways, you'll find that the roadwork from last year was carried in this year. So we're gonna have an exorbitant number there.
Final item, we've been working on twenty twenty-six budgets. That was included in my report, our budget numbers pursuant to a meeting with Harold and Barry. I've further crunched those numbers. We were looking at paving, having a contract paving for Buck Hollow Road at approximately a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Oil and chip off the Calico Road and Plow Road. And township paving on Seifert and Hewitt as well as miscellaneous patching throughout the township. And I ran some numbers here, so our budget number on that when we first discussed it was six forty-nine fifty-eight. I, the next two pages that I handed out to you are kind of a more in-depth review of that. And then I thought, you know, I'm always telling you that I try to be a little conservative with our numbers. So the final page, I ran the same scope of work with the cost that we received this year. And that's six hundred and forty thousand in twenty twenty-five numbers would be five eighty-one six oh three. So I think if we stay proactive here and advertise our oil and chip work at a minimum early, I think that we're gonna be able to put that work in our five hundred and fifty ballpark. Which is a good issue for, so, you know, I don't know if you're looking for any action from them or we wanna, you know, I don't know where we left that, Harold, but I think we're on the right track here.
Yes, so we did hear back from unions and they are willing to go in on the hardship with us. So we get a bigger bulk rate and I haven't heard anything from Brecknack yet. But I think that we need to take action sooner than later so that we can get the bids out in December and award in January, which is where we get to make this.
Because we need to do what we're on, say, and get it done now.
And especially with oil and chip, if we know that next, I mean, you know, that's not a difficult thing to put together. So as long as we get everybody's numbers, we can get that out in true order. And I do think that's where your biggest cost saving is gonna be, if we get a large oil and chip contract between three municipalities out end of year, I think that's gonna be very attractive.
Do you already have unions, you just need Brecknack chip?
Yes.
All right, I'll see if I can find out.
So take this, take a look at it if you have any questions, if you want to discuss any, to let me know, we're gonna keep sharpening the pencil and get there. That's all I have unless there's any questions from you.
All right, Colin? Nothing, nothing to report.
None.
All right, Barry.
Good morning. Today, the two thousand eighteen MAC that was involved in the incident, we got tired on it, so that is back up and running. Took it up to Fleet Pride to get the U bolts retorqued, which is required after five days of so many hours of service. So that's back up and running. As soon as we're done paving with Brecknack, we're going to start prepping all the plumbing equipment. As you can see, our salt ends are full. Hopefully, there's no issues next for this coming up season. And like I said, we're just still ongoing paving with Brecknack, hoping to wrap that up in the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking for caution, wreck and hell, I guess EAC does. The nation requests four hundred dollars for the Pennsylvania Interface Power and Life, I guess it was last. They obtained four hundred free trees and they gave them away. And EAC would like to just donate to this organization, provided there's four hundred trees and data shrubs, more or less payment of power per tree.
Yeah, I, we'll throw it in the end of this, but are we okay donating to a religious organization? I'm just saying, I mean, I don't have, I think against it.
It certainly works on a potential violation of this separations clause. Because there was no, you know, it was a, here's four hundred trees and shrubs, you give them away, do what you please, we give them away and. There was nobody giving speeches.
Oh, yeah, I know that, I'm just, I'm just saying, with an order that looks at it, they don't look at that part of it.
Pick up the trees.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'm nothing against it, I, you know.
Look, I'm happy, I'm happy to research the issue, I, I honestly, I would advise against it because of the religious aspect. Can clarify things for the next meeting? I will try. We can share batteries. Okay, and then we got new business, old business, anything else, Harold? Before we go back to executive session?
Wait, we're doing executive session, a question.
I have a couple questions.
Whether they're like or not, I don't know what to tell you. I want to know when the rules changed from the way we treated Rich Howitt to the way things are now with Harold. We only get certain emails, we don't get everything. And Mr. Beller, you were the one that had everything had to come to us, well, that's not the case now. Mr. Howitt couldn't spend more than five hundred dollars without blessings from all of us. You spend whatever you see fit and we don't, we don't have any accountability from you, you just do it. And then we find out after the fact, which.
What do I have to explain? What do you have to explain? I'll respond to Ms. Bridenstine.
Oh, wait a minute, that's right, you would respond.
If she's ever gonna be done, I'll respond.
I didn't ask you.
It doesn't matter, I'll respond.
What else does it have?
When you're done, man. Okay, now, there's been a consistent problem from prior managers with getting emails. I'm a big advocate of openness and transparency whenever possible. Having said that, Mr. Steve walked into a giant mess. Which he asked, are you going to continue to be rude, man? Which he, which he continues to pick away at and try and get this, this township moving the proper direction. As the name implies, interim is temporary. And now you want to kind of shoot the messenger, you want to pick on the person. You want to pick on the person that's getting the job done.
The rules changed.
The rules changed because of interim.
So I don't think the rules have changed at all, and if you think there's some emails you're not getting, I know Mr. Steve to be very reasonable, I'm sure he'll get them to you.
That's because you sit there every sat in the morning at six o'clock, you're judged.
We're gonna go into executive session at eight or nine for chief has some other personal matters.
Maybe it would be better if you stayed out of there at six in the morning to nose poke and go through things and stay out of the personnel files who knows has no business in it. Hey, there's a thought, but you're, you are like buddies. There's enough people to verify that.
You're done, Ron. Moving on.
Ron will be in the morning, he's got a concussion.
I'll hold him though.
He just concussed himself. You gonna buy him a?
That's what, not to scare you, but that's what Barry Boop passed away from. He fell, hit his head, just left it go. Couple weeks later, he was feeling weird, went to bed, his wife called down to Mount Penn and said, you gotta, or Barry called, or yeah, Barry called and said, hey, my dad's in cardiac arrest, can you guys get up there quick? And that's, they're saying there's a blood clot from a, hit his head.
Ron, moral of the story is go to hospital right now.
I gotta get out of here with him to work.
I'm curious what the accusations were that he was talking about.
Yeah.
They never broke that out.
No, they silenced them. Which I think is.
Like a TV show.
I think it's a far cry from our township meetings.
I gotta come here, get a little adventurous since we don't have this in our township meetings anymore.
I think we have a lot more residents than come to ours and I think it's a good thing. It holds the boards accountable.
I love y'all, but I'm not making this an every Tuesday thing.
Cool, we can go outside and sing "Bye Now" if you go outside, you buy your banjo's right now.
Banjo's?
Banjo's.
I do too, banjo's.
One of their less, their less strings.
The YouTube recording keeps going, the executive session?
Yeah. That was the whole thing.
Yeah, I remember.
Residents know what's going on.
Our meeting's going YouTube too. Yeah, we have what's called like an owl that sits in the middle.
Yeah.
Obviously, our, our boardroom is a lot bigger than this, probably ten times bigger. And it sits in the middle and then if a resident signs in to talk, they come up and speak, but it shows everything. I think it's a good thing, though.
Yeah.
I wish people can't make it, they can still see what's happening.
I just wish this one you could hear.
This agenda's a little finicky. I think things that are being motioned on should be listed that they're being motioned on.
It's funny, they're worried about spending money. We have a firehouse that hasn't opened in garage doors in probably seven weeks. But that's okay, we're gonna give them a hundred thousand dollars a year and I ask questions. How is that right? And they, and the supervisors don't want to do anything because the residents aren't speaking up.
They don't want calls.
They don't, nobody wants calls, do they?
Wow.
Across, across the street from their state.
Okay. We, we, Exer, Exer comes over multiple times for accidents in front of their firehouse. They don't even turn the lights on inside. Honestly, God, it's. I'm not lying, everything I'm saying.
We're running polls for Greensfield, the fire township, we got an intermunicipal agreement now. They're actually paying for our firefighters to run out the road to nowhere because Greensfield wasn't showing up. I mean, our chief was getting there before anybody from their place was coming out.
Oh, I know. It's the talk of the town. Yeah, volunteerism's tough, man. I mean, we're at. I heard you guys changed all the governors on the engine so they can go faster out the bypass.
They make it over there in three minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, like sixty was the number in the video. You got it, Joe. Yeah, you're telling me, especially when you gotta take a tower out to Chambersburg.
I don't start.
Is that going at sixty? Oh, sixty-two.
I followed him home. Bad mistake, but I didn't want to break down and I have to turn all the way around to come again. So I followed him, but it took us like two and a half hours to get home.
And it's not a smooth ride at all.
His tail went like this, like, maybe got back, she's just.
I wish I had cruise control, man, my foot was really cramped in Mount Penn like there. Xander went out with me one time, the first time we took it there. I looked over, he's catching flies like this one.
You're a firefighter, huh?
We're gonna get Ron to do it too soon.
What?
No, drive fire trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Give him the whistle. We had ten people start the civil service process.
I know.
We're gonna hire more guys. And we got one at the end. People were having a hard time passing the CPAT.
The one that you got.
Do you know who we got? The one person that's, that's made it through?
We, from Exer.
Okay, who was it?
Or you still have, not the one that left.
Andy?
Huh?
Andy?
Yeah, he left.
Well, Derek left.
Okay.
Who's, yeah, Kissling went down to Chester.
Yes, he went back to where he was.
Andy's still there.
Andy's still around for Exer.
Tombs. I will. Yeah, we just hired him.
Yeah.
A few months ago. That's because when we went to the civil service.
Andrew, welcome by.
Hi. Oh, yeah, I walk out of there, I just started listening to it because it's still on my OBS. And I have enough documentation to prove Mr. Beller's theory. So we might as well have the board know what happened. And I know we're getting right back to him. Oh, I could care less. I don't like people lying, I have problems with that. I don't like people lying, I have problems with that.
All right, we'll come back in regular sessions at eighteen seventeen. We did discuss personnel matters, um, this day eighteen, anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to date eighteen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to date eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I will do that.
On favor.
All right.
I wanted to take a look at the more documented.
Okay, that's.
Cause you're, cause you're, cause you're accepted for board and if the board wants you to take the contract submission, you should. That's, that's a good plan, sir. I think I, I think I. But I wanna take a look.
Yeah, see you later.
Everybody did get copies of everything, right?
What?
Everybody did.
The two, the two, no one, right? Yeah, we just, you know, six AM, ten o'clock or something. Hey, Paul, you know, who sent you any, who sent you any Facebook things because it's probably still screwy, so that's why I didn't do this. I don't wanna get you fucked into that.
I don't know.
So for Monday, it's fine?
Yeah, I think you're administrator of the stages, you know, I guess, I don't, I don't see how to do it, I think it's just. Um, but it would be the EAC on, on the Robinson path, and like, someone played advice that I think there's three should intertwine, it takes that too. Somehow, unless, unless it all filters through the Robinson line, and the other ones, I don't know how they.
Or you could just like, what you post in the meeting and share.
Yeah, cause I mean, yeah, but think if, yeah, somehow if like, chief does want it, goes to the regular one, and EAC, if EAC wants it, goes to police and the regular, I don't know.
Yeah.
Or something, I don't have, that's.
Yeah, and it's in a simple way, they can just like, if they, if they take care, so you know the states.
But uh, if you don't care, I'll send your name on or send you something, because like I said, I was holding back.
All right.
Cause I didn't want you to get, you know, since we're.
Yeah, no, we're getting there.
Is that the ag preservation map? What? Is that the ag preservation map?
Yes, well, I saw that one.
Which one? That one there, is that the one with all the ag preservation stuff?
Well, actually, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, this is all new now. Right, so, I, I just got a new map. So I'll bring it down.
Cause it has N O T on here, which is not all this other stuff.
I get, yeah, I got a new ag preservation map. But that one there, they just added all that stuff.
They just put all the postings on there.